I'd like to call the meeting to order for the October 3rd special call meeting for the city council. Welcome everyone here. Two quick items. One is we'll do the roll call. Let the record show that all members of council are present, as well as the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. We work from, working from a prepared agenda tonight. It's a relatively short list of items. So with that said, we'll go to item two, which is new business, 2A's economic adjustments for employee compensation. Mr. Mendenhall?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have before you on page two of the agenda packet, a memo and some calculations. The summary of the memo is that we're in some unprecedented, unique times that a lot of us haven't seen for a very, very long time, and some of us haven't seen for our entire career in public service. But this, this unique situation is characterized by a tight labor market scenario, perhaps a recessionary environment. I believe it's a recessionary environment, given some indicators. But the labor market remains tight. And the business of public service is very people intensive. And in order to retain and to attract, recruit, the very best talent to our very, very talented workforce that we have, we need to look at some compensation adjustments, primarily due to these economic challenges. The inflation rate, if you will, is putting pressure on the labor market, putting pressure on compensation, and in turn, putting pressure on employees. So in that context, a recommendation has come forward, and I'm pleased to present it here tonight, based on all of these foregoing considerations, that a 10% economic adjustment to compensation be considered, which would be 8% in direct pay and 2% in paid time off. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First of all, I'd like to commend our city employees for this example of this, this weekend, they were out in force working when some other cities wasn't. And, and I want to tell you, I appreciate y'all, and I appreciate what y'all do. And, and I think that, I've said all along, that cities down here in pay, and we need to get them up here. And the only way you can do it is give them raises. So I'm, I'm for the city employees, and I want to see us do something that will benefit them.
I guess the big, my biggest question is, and I guess you'll go over this, is how will this be funded?
Yes, sir. I'd like to refer you to page two, which is the inflation, inflation adjustments to pay spreadsheet. Table one is the general fund, and table two is the water sewer fund impacts. We'll start with the general fund, because each of the funding mechanisms are different for each fund. What you've got is a table, and, and the columns going across, in that first row, you've got the different percentages of pay to select from, going from four all the way up to 12%. Then you have some various other columns, and that is the, the budget of COLA that we had already budgeted in the, in the budget for the current fiscal year. The general fund salary savings, we're down about 7% in, in the general fund, on a retention type basis. And the year-to-date salary savings. And then, of course, anticipated future salary savings. What all that means is, we have positions open. We've had positions open for some time. We have a inability to fill certain positions, and we're constantly looking for people to fill those positions. So you have a net of all of those things. And then you have the way that it's to be funded, basically the funding plan, if you will. And that funding plan is to allocate additional sales tax revenue, which we have received in the past fiscal year of $778,113. And that's not allocating 100% of it. It's allocating a certain percentage based on the percentage of the COLA. So if you go down to the next column, it's gonna, or the next row, rather, it's the third row from the bottom on the general fund, in the 8% range, the dollars in sales tax unallocated is $289,296.92. And there's a percentage that's unallocated there. 37% of the sales tax would be unallocated. And then there's annualized cost. So in other words, we're using sales tax dollars not budgeted, that we have received, to fund the, the pay increase. There's a little concern with that, because sales tax dollars are not a sure thing. They, they fluctuate. However, we are seeing in the last sales tax disbursement, a 12% increase over the 778,113 number. So we've actually got $93,373.56 more than what we had last year at this time. So sales tax, and there are a lot of theories as to why it keeps going up. But one of the theories is that the sales tax base was broadened, and that inflation increasing the cost of goods in turns increases the sales tax take that the municipalities have throughout the state. So actually, the sales tax appears to be actually better than stable. It's to the good, 12%. So that's the general fund side. The net annualized cost is what it would cost to sustain it moving forward, and you would sustain it with the sales tax. Table two is the water sewer fund impacts. That's not sales tax funded, so there's another revenue stream there that has to be made up for. And you can see the, again, the, the cost going across with the COLA from 4% to 12%. How much the, the cost would be for the remainder of the year, the pre-budgeted COLA that we already had budgeted in the, in the current fiscal year. Salary savings in that department, future salary savings in, in that area, netted out, and an annualized total cost to that. There's some savings in capital acquisition and construction that we had this year for I&amp;I and that sort of thing. We have about $500,000 available on the water sewer fund to allocate to this purpose, and it would be reoccurring funds. So you would net out approximately about $220,000 net positive every year. The annualized cost at an 8% would be $285,619.
John, I'm not clear on your spreadsheet here. Is it, I understand the numbers you just went over, but am I seeing that for, under the general fund, annualized total cost, $633,576? Is that a net number that is unfunded?
Yes, sir. That is a, a net number unfunded in the next fiscal year.
Okay. So basically, in order to do this, taking, adjusting for everything you just went over, we've still got to come up with $634,000 of additional revenue to fund just the general fund increases. Is that correct?
No, sir. What you have is the availability of funding it with the sales tax dollars. I can't make that decision for you. I can make that recommendation. So moving forward, you wouldn't have the availability of the 778,113. It would have to be allocated for this purpose.
Okay. On the sales tax, let me touch on that. Back on, you sent us a memo on April the 7th regarding forecast on recession, okay? And you had already started working, rightfully so, on a plan of what we were going to go through, and how we were going to deal with the recession. Included in that, John, is you are, you were projecting in April, a decline in sales tax of $226,000 the first year, and $255,000 the second year. So against your favorable adjustment, your original estimate was $482,000 loss of sales tax that we would not have. So is this no longer applicable? Are you anticipating that recession, there's not going to be any loss in sales tax?
Yes, sir. It's a very good question. The April recessionary buffering memo anticipated that there would be a pullback in the sales tax available, which we haven't seen yet. But it also did not allocate the increase that the league had recommended. So we went sales tax neutral on it, meaning that we didn't allocate any new funds for it. So what that does basically is, it's a net wash. You've got realized, actual, in your hands, $778,113. And you haven't seen the recessionary impacts of sales tax. And that goes back to this theoretical concept that we're seeing statewide, that sales taxes aren't going down, they're going up, because spending is still occurring. Because there are a couple of things going on. 2008, sales tax reform hadn't occurred yet in this state. The base had been broadened after 2008, and you're not seeing a, a pullback or a decline in sales taxes. Why that is, there's, there's competing theories as to why.
Well, but the recession hasn't really got going. I mean, you know, the, when we look at it, I've saw just today, a huge decrease in resale of houses. You know, interest rates still going up. You see what the Fed's doing. Our own cost of capital is increasing. I mean, there are, there are a lot of indicators that this recession could be really serious, and I'm concerned about the projecting something that may not happen. That we're counting 700, whatever our sales tax dollar is here, when it may go the other way. I mean, I, so, so again, I'm, I'm just for clarification. So the general fund, $633,576 annualized cost, is or is not something that has to be funded?
It is something that has to be funded.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That we do not have today?
You, you have a couple of options today. You've got the, the sales tax revenue, and on up into this document, you've got the COLA that was already budgeted, that has not been spent. You've also got the-
What was the amount of that COLA?
That COLA was planned to be up to a 2% on a merit basis at the time. And that's why we're calling it a COLA now. We haven't given any of that money out yet. It was budgeted for 1% on an average, normal distribution, like a bell curve across the organization. So you've got $40,400 of that dollars available. And then you have all the salary savings, because you've got all these open positions down the line.
Now, these savings forecasts can, I can certainly see where they would help us upfront. But I'm not sure how, now, since the pay raises are permanent on it, I'm not sure, two years down the road, how we can find comfort in a job that is frozen today, that's applied to these numbers. I'm just, it concerns me that we're talking about temporary adjustments or situations against a permanent pay increase on it.
Yes, sir. And that, that's why you've got, you've got two costs there. You've got the net cost for the remainder of the fiscal year, and then you have the annualized total cost, realizing that you've got a fiduciary responsibility, not just to pay it out this one time, that it carries with you moving forward. So you're going to have to deal with it as, as a council, at budget time next year. That's going to be less money that you have to, to deal with moving forward. And that's why it was annualized out, because it is a bigger number. If you look at it per rata right now, you're looking at only a fraction of the pay periods. There are 26 pays throughout the fiscal year. You're only looking at maybe three quarters of those to have to fund. And then you have all this other moving around, the COLA that was already funded, the salary savings. So it's not giving you a true picture. The $633,576 was included to give you a true picture of an annualized 12-month all-in. This is where it's coming from. Or this is how much it's costing, rather.
Okay. Under water and sewer, you're showing a loss or a, a negative benefit of $285,619, correct? Now, does that mean, now, since water and sewer is under a separate fund, does that mean that we're going to be looking at an additional increase in water and sewer going forward to fund this variance? Or, or do you anticipate some additional water and sewer revenue?
No, sir. What we've got are some one-time capital purchases in water sewer, and some construction that would not be carrying forward. So when we did the, the rate increase at 5%, we're not projecting another rate increase in the upcoming fiscal year. Conditions could change. I'll tell you, the chemicals are up 67%. So we're looking at all of that. But your costs are up, but they seem to be doing fine right now.
Okay. Again, I mean, you mentioned one-time capital savings. That's what's concerning me, is that we're estimating one-time savings against a perpetual increase on it. And I'm not finding the comfort as to where we're going to find these revenues a year, two, three years down the road. Where are we going to find this additional revenue to cover this expanded year on it? While, while I've got the mic, if I can, let me, if we can back up, what was the effective date of the, what was it, 7% raise that we gave some months ago? The effective date. Do you know?
I believe the effective date was the first pay in December. And we'd have to go back and look at that. It was predicated on social security in October.
Okay. To call it January 1?
I think it was, I think it was a year before that, if I'm-
All right. With, when we did that, John, am I correct in recalling, that the first year's funding of that was coming from COVID funds or something? That there was no, no charge against our budget for the first year?
The, the first two and a half years are COVID money. And, and you have actually hit on a very good point. That's why it's not probably prudent to allocate all of your sales tax dollars to this pay increase. You've already got an obligation out there.
Well, that's, that's kind of where I'm going, because for the, the raise that we've already given, okay, that now, I'm, I stand corrected, and I'm glad you corrected me on that. I thought it was one year, but you're saying we've got 200, two and a half years of free ride. But when that goes away, we've got that one to pay for too, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So we're, we're not talking about a 7%, we're talking about a 17% pay raise within one year, one, one calendar year? Seven and 10?
Or seven and eight. Recommendations for eight.
But you've got a 2% bump in benefits. Maybe I should say benefit, increase in benefits?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's a 17% increase in benefits in one calendar year?
What, what you would do is, you, you would allocate, like, right now, you've got this extra sales tax coming in. So it's hitting your fund balance. Your fund balance has moved from about 55% to about 79%. So you're, you're banking all this revenue that you're not spending out, which is a conservative good thing to do. At some point, you'll have to figure out what you want to do with your fund balance. So with that one-year mark, whatever date that is, two and a half years in the future, it's probably like one and a half in the future now, you would have to figure out where to allocate those funds. So that's why the, the maxing out of sales tax with this 8% recommendation, you'll see that it wasn't maxed out. There's a buffer there to pay for what's already been obligated.
Okay. All right. One, one other question, and I'll back away. On your turnover rate, your memo would say that we've now, that the turnover rate had bumped up to 7%. First of all, what, what would be your normal turnover rate? That was a, in your August 5th memo, you had indicated, actually, it was a statement, says, "We've been maintaining a turnover rate at less than 5%." So is it safe to assume, under normal conditions, your normal turnover 4% to 5%?
I would think that it's probably a little bit lower than that. What we've got, and I don't have enough history to be able to tell you, you've got what I'm going to call the COVID time, in, in my mental memory. Whatever it was prior to that, I would think would be a little bit lower, probably 2%, 3%. What you've got is a family atmosphere with a city of being a very good culture. People want to work here. What gets concerning is, when you start escalating past 7% and you begin losing a person a week in critical service areas, like the water plant, the police department, that sort of thing. The question then becomes, how far do you let it go before you take proactive measures to stop it? And that's, that's really kind of where we are with it.
And that's where, Mr., and that's where we are right now, right? Within our water department itself?
Yes, sir.
We're losing down, where are we down to? About five people right over there now?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And it's now where they have moved to other cities to go to work in that. You're also losing public works too, right?
That is correct. There, there are open positions just about in every department at this point, which is not unusual statewide. But it's something that you need to be aware of, and needs to be addressed before it spins out of control.
Well, a lot of these also have been, in the past, where you told them about the 7% or less, was in retirement also, weren't they not? In some of those departments?
Yes. And you're still losing to retirees. And part of the problem we're seeing, particularly in, in police, and a little bit in fire, is more people are retiring than are going to be LET. And we're not paying a wage that is attractive to anybody in BLAT. As a matter of fact, we're on the lower end countywide. So there's no real way to make sure that you replace the ones that you're losing to retirement, or going down the road to work for, for more money, the same job. You've got to be able to replace at a replacement rate of at least one per one. You're replacing it less than one per one right now.
The 7% turnover rate that you're facing now, John, is it basically across the board? Or is there a higher percentage, say, with PD, or maybe even, Jerry had mentioned, some of the water and sewer operators, those kind of things? Can you talk a little bit about where that is? What, what is your problem loss area?
It, it seems to be across the board. There are very few departments that don't have that experience right now. Parks and Rec doesn't have that experience. All the others, IT doesn't have that experience either. Some of the departments, as they get smaller, turnover would be, if you lose one, you're measuring it in like 30% or 50% turnover. Where you're seeing it is in the larger departments, public works, what I'm going to call skilled trades and certified type workers. They've got a certificate in water and sewer, and they can go run Dan River Water. They've got a certificate at the water plant, and they can go run Reedsville's water plant. You're also seeing it on the police side. And that could be a societal thing. It could be retirement. It could be the lack of, of large BLAT classes to replace those that are leaving. That may be different than people with a certificate trying to monetize their knowledge. But regardless, you're seeing it there as well.
I, that's basically where I was going, is that, are these, the majority of these losses, folks that require certificates, or special training, or those kind of things? Or is it just a general across the board? But you're saying it's more across the board, as opposed to a higher percentage of?
Well, Phil, I think that everything in our city now, all these people that are in our street departments here and within, they have to be certified to be able to work our equipment. And, you know, that's a, you know, that's a big plus for them to, you know, to show that they've, what they've gone out and done. And that's really a, a, a big plus for them, to be certified. The more, the more the certified certification is, the more the money they should be making. Because you've got some people that are, you know, that can dig a hole, and some people can't dig a hole.
And respectfully, if I may, to Councilmember Ellis's point, most of the positions, if not all of the positions, other than some of your temporary workers that work in the summer, doing some things, all have some sort of certification, whether it be a CDL or a pesticide license, certified police officer, certified firefighter, certified utility operator, certified IT analyst or specialist. There's a lot of knowledge base here. A lot of, of very smart people, doing very good public service type work. And it's something that you don't want to lose. But I, I really appreciate you saying that, Mr. Ellis, that we have some very skilled, knowledgeable people. We really do. And want to always give them a good shout out for that.
And I understand that, and acknowledge that, and appreciate that. That's all I'm trying to understand, is that if someone gains a certification, do they typically get a bump in pay raise, pay increase?
Yes, sir. They do.
Okay. Well, that's all I'm trying to get to on it. It's just trying to understand, where is our problem? Are we not training people like we should be doing, those kind of things? I'm just, this is just a general understanding for me.
If I may offer a, a scenario, there's a municipality that's looking for a solid waste equipment operator, actually two, within about 10 minutes of one another. One pays more than 8% and has probably a, arguably a, a better benefits package for their employees. Another pays less than 8%. And they're both looking for the same worker. And obviously, if you think of the mentality of the worker, and what you see driving down 14 with help wanted signs everywhere, money talks. And that's really what it gets down to at the end of the day, that there's no way to compete with that municipality down the street that's making more money.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I would, I would like to see if we couldn't check on the possibility of, of giving more than 8%.
I think maybe 9.5.
Nine and a half would be good. And the reason I say this, I've talked to several of the city employees, and they say they'd rather have the money than the time off. And they said, the cost of living is, everybody knows this, is going out the roof. And, and I think we need to look after these guys. I've said it all along.
If we bumped it up to eight, from eight to nine and a half, excuse Mr. Underwood, but if we bumped it up from eight to nine and a half, are you in the red or in the black on that situation? You have any idea about that?
I think we'd be very close to being in the black. It might be a, a net positive to us.
You're in the red when you, when you do 8%. I mean, where I come from, you don't spend it if you don't have it.
Well, and I say, well, I don't think that-
I'm banking on something we don't have, especially since we've already done a budget for this year. We had this for next year, and the budget process, I'm okay with it. But I'm, I'm not okay with this right now, sir.
Well, Mr., sometimes we have to go out and we have to make decisions, because right now, we can't afford to lose these gentlemen and ladies right here to other people. And I can't afford to turn around and, you know, come back in here, and next year be more than what we need. But I think in the past years, we've been on this board here, and we've stepped forward. And this, this, this city has stepped up for it, and for the needs of it. And what these, this city has done for this town, and it's like Mr. Underwood said, you know, they were out this past weekend. Well, it ain't too many times that we don't see them out and about in the mornings, and when, you know, everything else is going on. But I think the most important thing here is the livelihood and these gentlemen. Yeah, it's, things are tough right now. It's tough everywhere. You know, you, you turn around, another personal, you go out and buy two cones of ice cream, and M&amp;M's, things at McDonald's, lady, you know how much it is? It's $9. So yeah, it's tough. But the thing of it is, is right now, we need to make sure that this city's taken care of. And these gentlemen right here, and these women right here, and this police department, fire department, and everybody else that's in around us, and the citizens of this town know that we protect them, and we stand up for them.
Any other comments, questions?
John, how many employees has the city lost going to other places? I mean, are we talking 10, 15, 30?
We're down about 15 now. And they've gone from a mixture of, to other municipalities or counties. Also, private industries picking up a lot of them.
John, I may have missed it, in our thinking about other things, the $778,000 sales tax. All right. That is what we're planning on using to fund the majority of this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Now, where has this been used in the past?
It, it has not been used since COVID times. We have not been escalating our budget for the 778, because we actually thought that that was an aberration, people staying at home, buying more. But it does not appear to be so.
Is that 778 increase, or just 778,000 yearly income?
That, that's increase from what we've got in the budget right now as sales tax. You're actually realizing a $778,000 increase. That's what you're seeing. And it's actually higher than that today. It's 12% higher, about $93,373.56, according to the July report. And it's a, it's a shooting target. It's a moving target. And I don't want anybody to think that sales tax won't go down. Sales tax is not a sure thing. And that's one of the reasons why it wasn't budgeted during COVID, that it, it's not, it's not a steady source like property tax, or selling water. It fluctuates. But we haven't seen this fluctuation. As a matter of fact, the last time sales tax went down was in the '08 financial crisis. But we've also buffered against that by not increasing it in the, in the current fiscal year as well. So we've been very, very conservative on all of that, as we've gone through budget cycles.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we go nine and a half percent, with whatever else, the, the two days, holiday, and, and cut out the three sick days, three, three sick days.
Is that the way it was presented, John?
No, sir. That's a modification. The, the way I understand is 9.5% cost of living adjustment, and two vacation days, remove the three sick days.
Yes, sir. Because you got to pay somebody to cover those sick days.
And those vacation days will be able to use within any time that they want to out of the year?
They'd be, they'd be added to the vacation balance, if you want to use them for a special day of significance, or a special holiday, that's only, that you, you and your family, your birthday, or what have you. Yes, sir.
John, if inflation continues, even though it seems to have appreciated, bumped down a little bit, are we going to be looking at doing this again next year? This is twice in one year that we've been doing this. We're going to be looking at it again?
Mr. Honeycutt, that's a very difficult question to answer, and I, I'll tell you why, because it's weighed on me quite a bit. One, I think we're all victims to a, a inflationary environment across the board, nationwide, global. So we don't know what the future foretells. I'd like to be able to tell you that, no, we won't look at it. But at some point, if there becomes a pressure point, or a pain point with retaining employees and providing services, it's incumbent upon me to come to you and tell you that we've got an issue that needs to be addressed. Is it 8%? Is it 50% inflation and devaluation of the dollar? I hope not. And that would be gosh awful. But I, I can't look into a crystal ball and see very far on this thing. And I hope, I really sincerely hope that we don't have to do that. But the way the- But the way the current administration is overstimulating the economy on a monetary policy basis and then a constriction of capital through rate increases, I don't know what the future foretells, I really don't.
That's my concern too, John. I mean, at the end of the day, any way you cut it, the taxpayers of the city are the ones that have to pay this on it. And they're-
I'm sorry.
They, they, they're the ones that's having to pay this or fund it, let's say like that, on it. And everybody in the city is hurting. I mean, it's not just city employees, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that we've got the employees that do what they do. Just as Councilman Ellis said, it was a hell of a weekend, you know, with the storm coming through. Fire department had that major house fire. I mean, I get all that stuff and I want to do everything I can to help them. But I'm also with Mr. Kirkland on it. I'm having a hard time spending money we don't have. We do not have it. We're guessing what's gonna happen. We're, we're projecting what sales tax is going to do. And even against your own memo is that back in April, you projected a half million dollar decrease on it. So I'm just, that's where I'm mixed up on all of this stuff, is that do we roll the dice and do we gamble on it? And we're now talking sixteen and a half percent pay increase, pay, or benefit, let me call it that, any way you cut it, in a single year on it. And I just don't know where we're gonna get the money to do this.
We're still not where we need to be doing that.
John, you mentioned that somebody left for a twenty thousand dollar increase. Now, what, where does that put that position at eight percent increase?
That, that position that they left for was a promotion to a higher position, a plant superintendent, they were a chief operator. We figure that that municipality is about apples to apples, operator to operator, like an operator four to operator four, is about nine point one percent. So about half their increase was probably due to our disparity in pay and then half their increase was because they took a promotion. So it's a little bit of an apple to an orange insofar as they went from a-
I mean, what, what, what does our position pay? You know, is it seventy thousand dollars a year or?
No.
Thirty thou, I mean, because twenty thousand, you know, at eight percent, you know, to get a twenty thousand dollar bump, you gotta have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar base pay.
Correct, correct. I believe they were making something like forty, somewhere in there, and went up to sixty.
So even at this, if we go up ten percent, you know, you're talking about a four thousand dollar increase and you're looking at a six, you know, sixteen thousand dollar less. So do we need to sit, get back and discuss? You know, some of these positions may, you know, that may not, this may not fix that. What do we, are we gonna throw money here and not fix? Or do we need to sit down and fix and see what it's gonna cost us to fix?
It may be a good idea to conduct a salary study, a salary survey and come in and look at that. We had talked about that. I know Councilmember Underwood had discussed that at the budget retreat. We took the league data that we had at the time and throughout the state were fairly comparable. The problem that I think we're beginning to see is that other entities close by are no longer comparing themselves to like sized entities. The county, for instance, studied Alamance, Guilford and Randolph. All those entities are much larger, have a different tax base makeup than Rockingham. The problem is, we're competing with Rockingham for certain positions, we're competing with Redsville for certain positions. So we may need to look at a more tightly construed salary survey and not just say municipality's fifteen thousand to twenty thousand. And that, that may lend itself to what you're talking about, is trying to get into a competitive rate for the position.
But I mean, there's no use, you know, to sit here and vote on, you know, nine, ten, twenty percent when we don't know. You know, if we're, if we're try, what, what are we trying to do? Are we trying to be competitively priced so we can retain people? Then are we fixing this or are we just wasting our time and have to come back and do this in three months or six months or? I think we need to look at it and see what we need to do to make it right, I mean, fix it. So I mean, I don't know, just if we're not, if that's the problem, that twenty thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
I think that we insult our manager and our staff because they have done a good research on all this. They know what we're talking about and he's answered everything pretty amply. But we have an annex of employees. And not only that, a lot of people retiring. And I don't see where we need to just sit on this and work down the road somewhere. People hurting right now. And as you said, I saw the employees out in the storm working and doing what they could. And I'm, I'm gonna second Mr. Underwood's motion.
Okay, I have a motion for a nine and a half percent raise to vacation days and a second. Is there any, any further discussion?
I'd like to make an alternate motion. That the, that we pause on this and conduct a salary increase, salary assessment to, to Councilman Noe's point, to try to determine where our problems are and address fixing the problems specific on it.
All right. I'll second that. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a little discussion on that. And then it seems that we, as a board here, can't stand up and go ahead and as we understand the fact that where these employees here, you know, it's easy to turn around and walk away. And you might come in here tomorrow morning and we may not have what we need. And in reality, they know that what they can do is stand up and walk away. And where will we be as far as the city goes and we tell our people, you know, from where we gave away COVID money? Did you not? Was that not COVID money we gave earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that was from the government, correct?
But we're gonna fund it from, after two and a half years, the city's gonna fund it from then on out, so it's not-
Correct, and we also gonna have other businesses turn around here and come in here. When we have a new business coming up, getting ready to open the doors in twenty, twenty-three, hopefully that'll be their opening dates. And the houses are selling and things are positive. But now we're gonna turn around and we want to go back and we want to check. I think we need to stay forth and stand forth and go with what we asked for with the nine and a half and with the days.
So right now I got a motion and a second to do the salary study. Any other discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Of what?
Of your motion.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
The motion is to conduct a salary study, figure out where the problems that need to be fixed are, what effect it'll have on retention, those type things. And basically, I look at each job description and what, what should be adjusted and how. That's the motion and the second, and no other discussion. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that motion is defeated. And then I have a motion to do nine and a half percent with two days and no vac, no extra sick days. And a second on that from- Any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion carries four to three. Thank you.
Can we direct John to still do the study?
I think so.
I think what we're winding up doing, throwing money, and I don't mind giving them an increase tonight, but I think it's a little bit much. But I'd like to look at the, the positions that are, you know, that are a problem for us to feel. We have to have licensed operators and we have to have whatever. So, you know, I'd like to look at those and see, see if there's anything we can do to-
I would like to see this salary study done too, because I feel like, being a previous city employee, that the salary, even with the nine and a half percent, is not gonna be enough.
Ms. Gilli, is that handled to your satisfaction? Substitute motion that didn't pass and then the motion that was made prior to that didn't need to be re-motion. That's not a word, but okay, so we're good on that? On the second, oh, yeah. Yes, it is. Item two B, the fire station number two, bid awards, is that John or Erin or Kelly?
Earlier this year, as you all know, we had some significant problems happened at fire station number two. And as we, as a staff, we're discussing what to do and what not to do. The fire department had been working on it for a long time. I happened to have a conversation with a contact of mine at the Department of Commerce. And she suggested that with things the way they were, that they would have some CDBG money. And she asked me how much I thought we'd need and I gave her a number. And the bids that we've received for that are under that number, which leaves us contingency, a contingency percentage to put in the budget. And also payment for the consultant that we'll have to continue to pay because they don't like to give you CDBG money unless you have an authorized consultant. We bid it the first time and only got one bid. We bid it a second time and got two bids. Sears Construction Inc. was the lowest responsible bidder and their bid was at one seventy-nine, four sixty-six.
Any other questions for Kelly?
Kelly, would you hit the high spots of what's covered up for that amount?
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
We know that the truck bays had issues and so there's a lot of foundation work. And concrete work out of the front and in the truck bays. And then the station itself has not been updated in many years. Let me get back here to the list. And so we intend. There will be installing commercial grade in all rooms, luxury vinyl tile, luxury vinyl flooring, we'll be painting with Sherwin-Williams duration paint. We plan to prime and paint all the paneling. There'll be an installation of countertops to match the kitchen countertops out in the front of the office part of the building. The hallway will be primed and painted, the men's bathroom will be primed and painted, the walls. The wash and dry will be moved from downstairs area, including water connection and dryer vent, to the first floor of the fire station where the firemen themselves actually work. The women's bathroom will be improved. The back training room will be primed and painted. The kitchen cabinets will be primed and repainted. And the cabinet doors replaced, we'll replace the hardware. We put in a maximum of three hundred dollars for that. We'll install granite countertops, replace backsplash to coordinate with countertops and replace the sink with a stainless steel two compartment sink. In the bedroom, we intend to install partitions between the beds to give the fire staff a little more privacy as they sleep. It'll be a five foot tall studded sheet rock wall. The shower room will have the wallpaper removed and the walls and the vanity and et cetera will be painted. And lockable doorknobs that match will be put on the door. We intend to replace twelve windows that have long lived past their usefulness and install blinds on those windows. On the exterior, we intend to replace the front door. And this made sense to Bob, sixty-eight thirty is apparently a commercial door that you would replace the front door with. And all the contractors know what that is. The outside steps on the side of the building will be removed and backfilled. The gutters will be repaired, we'll repair the water damage around the windows and steps, including the interior portion of the windows, perform air quality tests, demolish and replace the concrete pad in front of the bay doors and replace the downstairs exterior door. We have an engineer's recommendation on how to repair the truck bay and we have bid it out to do that accordingly.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why are you gonna take your steps down?
Well, the fire department itself doesn't use them and they seem to be a water channel. There's some of the water problem.
One thing I'd like to see you do, because I used to work there. And I've mopped up many a gallon of water from where it rained coming through them windows.
Yes, sir.
I want you to make sure that they're gonna stop it.
That's the plan.
Oh, what about heating and air is what they got?
Apparently all that's sufficient at the moment.
How about the roof?
I was told there was no reason to replace the roof.
Roof is good, though.
I think so, yes.
I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you, Kelly. Item three is closed session. I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss property pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A four and to discuss personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A six.
Motion?
I have a motion to go into closed session and-
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Before we vote that, I would just want to tell everybody that the last item that we have when we come out of closed session is adjournment. So you're welcome to stay, but we'll probably just adjourn from the conference room. That's where we're gonna go for closed session. So I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries, we're in closed session. Thank y'all for being here.